I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion on the consent. Make motion to re-accept incentive gender of the burden. I second it. All okay.
This evening for announcements, I have some of you, they have been out about enough to notice that there's construction going on on the Meadows Road as the new traffic light is going in. It is likely that there will be traffic disruptions occasionally through the summer, but the plan is that the project will be completed by the end of September. The only possible wrinkle is that the arms that actually hold the light are backordered. And so if they can't get those, then the contract will be extended and we will wait a little bit longer for our long-awaited light. They're going to have, they're going to have some restrictions on how they work as well because of the coronavirus guidelines for social distancing. I think it must be rather difficult to work in construction on some jobs and maintain social distancing. So they're working as carefully as they can. We are here primarily for the bid opening. Christine, may we have the bids?
Yes. We received two bids. They were due on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, April 22nd. The first bid is from J.R. Hill &amp; Sons, and I will let you read the figures out loud.
So year one is 247, 707,000. Second year is 255,180, and the third year is 263,800. All prices are negotiable due to salt and sand prices per year and usages. Do you know what that came from for the three years?
What's that?
I was just wondering if we knew what the three-year total was.
Yeah, I don't think they added enough.
No, they didn't.
Around 765,000.
That's not long.
It's not.
How further, how much?
Let's, well, let's do the other one, then I'll ask my notes.
The second bid is from Goodall Landscaping.
And this is done the same way. First year is 224,698, second year is 231,438, and the third year is 238,381. Okay, those included?
The sand.
That includes the sand.
They'll be paying for the salt, too.
And the salt? I'm sure that I like the way those came in. Would you say more? I just think I would expect more details rather than just a total for each year.
That's what we asked for based on the contract.
I'm not saying that, Steve. I know what we asked for, but going forward, to me, that's not acceptable.
To have a total at the end of the three years, yeah. Yeah, we should have the bid attached to it, showing what they've committed to.
Well, it was the contract that you
Right, we looked at that.
Accepted. And usually, my experience, you just submit a bid form based on the package.
Right. If I did this another year, I'd want more on. And at least if you can't total up, then you must total the bid.
Right. And what was last year?
Last year did not include sand or salt.
Which will make a significant difference. And do we know what we?
Well, we spent, what, 40,000 in sand and salt last year?
We didn't have a very snowy winter.
No.
And this and Goodall?
35,000.
And Goodall's included?
35,000.
Yeah. And what was the contract?
I don't have the year before.
Do you know what the contract price was for Goodall last year?
For?
This season?
Hold on, I may have.
No, I didn't write it down. And I don't have it with me.
I don't have it.
I think it's like 167 or something.
Yeah. That's why we had separate papers. Well, we didn't, absolutely.
Keep going, try my own.
Did you total those by any chance, Susan?
So the Goodall came in at 696,518. And 750, they're roughly 60 grand a part, plus sand and salt. It appears that J.R. Hill's, if I did the math properly. I'm getting 696,518 inclusive of sand and seven, sorry. From Goodall.
From Goodall.
Goodall didn't include sand?
No, he's in the bottom.
Yeah, they're paying for both. They know that they're paying for both, salt and sand.
All prices are negotiable due to salt and sand prices per year.
Well, that's just what Hill wrote, that's all.
Yeah, he basically, he wrote that case that the sand was cheaper and it would be a better deal.
They know that they're paying for salt and sand.
Yeah. And so I came up with 766,730 to 696,518, roughly 60 grand difference.
I'm just curious of the increase from last year. It seems like it's almost, seems to me it's going to be like 60 grand more than it was last year.
And then about 35 to 40 would account for the potential price of sand and salt?
No, not really.
Oh. As in sand, with sand and salt not in the figures, it's 60,000 a part.
It's 70.
66,000.
Sand and salt was included in the bid.
Right.
On both of them.
On both of them. Right, so the figures without, because it's included whatever it ends up, it ends up as, so it's
It's 70,000.
766, yeah, 70,000 a part.
Yep.
Which, if we're just talking about one of these two guys, we want to do more research coming. I know this is the hard kind of, with only two bidders, we'd like to have, you know, three or four. I don't know the reasoning why we need to get more bids, but it would be nice to have a little more comparison. Between these two guys here, for Hill's price, where he's a town, our local town person, and I've been discussing some things with Jamie Hill, other people helping him in the town when he needed him or something, they'd be more fortunate to help him than Goodall. And he's within that 10%.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, within that 10% of being a resident.
So do we have that as a written policy somewhere?
No, we do not.
And so we, because we had a letter come back about that, that we need to quantify before we start. We can't claim a 10%, it's not part of the policy.
I thought it was in the bylaws.
It is not. And that came back as a complaint on the last bid.
Yeah, we don't have anything written.
It's been a longstanding custom.
Right.
And we are legally entitled to either accept all the bids, none of the bids, or reach out around, we choose to like accept.
But you can't make a stipulation of a 10% clause that's not in there.
No, we have, we don't have to have the stipulation. We can award the contract on the basis of the contract that we prefer and the contractor that we prefer.
Understood, but at the
We don't need to award it that way.
It was recorded at the meeting, when it was presented, that we took it because of the 10% clause that has not existed. So that's how we have to.
So I guess what I would like to do personally as the road commissioner, I would like to go through these numbers and figure out exactly what we're paying a mile and see if it's 550 or per mile. Most of these towns do their bidding so much per mile.
Yep.
And that were there, if they needed to get a couple extra contractors in there, then they take as much miles, not much miles, just to see if he's close in that, if these numbers even make sense for either person.
I think we should reopen that and put it out there again with more stipulations.
What would those stipulations be and how would I work them into the contract?
I think we need to know what they're charging us for salt and sand, are their figures totally completely different? Price per mile. I mean, I don't think we have enough here, it's just figures. I can tell you I want a quarter million dollars to do these roads and there's really nothing here saying what you're doing with that quarter million dollars.
But on that contract, it says what we expect from him. So they have to meet that. If they do not meet that, and then we can jump on them and say, you breached the contract, you're not doing it. We give
That worked well last year.
It's true.
Sorry, I mean, I just
We're not going to know how much salt we need them to provide to be the right
No, but if one is giving us a price of $10 a ton and another $200 a ton, where's the, where are they getting this sand from and why are the figures so different?
And we don't know what price per ton we're paying for salt yet, and they would be reimbursing us on the rate that we get for to purchase.
So actually, their figures could be closer together than what their bids are? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Because they don't know what salt's going to cost them?
It should be the same price regardless of who gets the contract.
No, but what I'm saying, may Hill have overbid because he thinks it's a different cost on the salt versus Goodall who's used another price when actually it's really going to be the usage and they're not sure what that is.
Does Jamie know he gave it that time cost?
Yes.
The problem is that's part of the issue, Jamie might put it on, put the greater out there and use less salt and sand. As long as he does the job that we ask him to do on these jobs, we don't care how much sand and salt he uses, as long as the job is done.
All I'm saying, all the contracts I do, they've got everything listed out on what they're going to spend. This thing's pretty vague to me. When I have vendors do a contract, they better tell me how much they're going to use, if they're leasing a piece of equipment, what they're renting it for, how much they're paying for electricity. They have 100 different things they need to explain, but this seems pretty vague.
Well, this probably should have been a question that was tabled before we put it up for the bid.
I haven't seen it.
And this is a local government, you know, it's not quite the same as the state and federal level, so we do see a lot more of that.
Right.
You've also seen the contract, you approved it at one of your meetings.
Right. We didn't, I didn't read it, we didn't have time to read it. And I think, and I think that we were looking at a $70,000 delta, there was things that were left that were in the contract last year, like certain pieces of equipment were required. So we need to before, you know, we need to make sure that they have the equipment that's called for in the contract, which was
Right, it's part of the contract.
But they didn't have it last year. So we need to
Right, it was laid out in this contract.
It was laid out last year's, too.
Look, you can look at past performance, can't you, as you decide what you want to do?
You're correct, and I brought that up four or five times, but we had no feet to stand on to push any product, because our first administrator, when he got signed on, allowed everything to go that was not
So what are the feet in this?
Hopefully we got something to stand on, I don't know.
Sally reviewed it, she loved it.
I don't think there's a I said, we couldn't do anything because we'd be stepping on, we don't want a lawsuit. So I just want to make sure that we don't Right, what changed in the, what changed in the rewriting in our, what's essentially our central contract, was that the language is more specific about accountability on account of our past experience. So if you want, if you want to put it out to bid, we're going, we're going to lose the time that we had hoped to make sure that we had dry sand, which is part of the issue.
You have a leg to stand on a little bit on putting out the bid. I don't have a problem putting it back out to bid and tightening up that a little bit because you have that coronavirus and stuff going on, so people, I mean, right now, if we work with the experts and say, okay, we're going to save for a simple go to Goodall, I should go to Goodall and make sure he has every piece of equipment ready to go, right now. If you don't have it, then it's, you don't get the contract.
Say we award this, say Goodall, and you go and you find out who doesn't have that. What are you saying? Is this enough time to rebid it or give it to the next?
Or you give it to the next little bidder.
Presuming he's available. The problem is that we, we need to make sure they have contractors.
The problem is, I'd like to see at least three to four more, three or four bidders, so we can compare apples to apples a little bit better. I mean, the sand and, and that's the biggest thing, is we use way too much salt and sand that then we gave to the last few years, because that's what he, you know, the contractor we had relied on, he had that followed with all the salt he wanted to use up there. Now, these contractors have been with equipment that they're supposed to have. Now, that greater makes a big difference, where people want to say, you start getting these roads slushy and you need to cut that stuff off them, and if you don't have all that salt to use, you're going to be out there babysitting a lot more.
So your recommendation, Steve, it's sitting in your road commissioner chair, socially distanced appropriately, I might add, is that we should put this out to bid again to see if we can snag a couple more bidders?
I would like to see a couple more bidders.
How many did we have three years ago?
We've run across this issue in the past, though, where we wanted to put something out to bid again, and there was concern because these bidders have already shown their hand.
Right, their bidders are already out there.
Is that an issue?
It is an issue.
And additionally, a lot of towns have let these bids months ago, and so are, is it possible we would find ourselves without anybody, they've already committed to other municipalities, and we won't be getting?
And that's a risk I think we take if we don't take one of these tonight, also.
Let me throw, let me throw this up there, okay? How about if we put a bid out for so much per mile, and let's try to see what we can get people to put the price per mile for a truck up there, and see what we can put together for three or four different contractors to get in on that, and say, you do the central crossing road, this guy does that, and then you've got three or four contractors up there doing it town, if somebody breaks down, they can communicate and one can help out with it.
Does all the contractors need to be greater?
No, as long as you
And that's a whole other contract, so we need to talk about another, they cut it dry.
We're behind the time, I think, under eight ball right now. These bids actually should have been out sooner.
This is all good, and we need to rethink this in three years. I think we've kind of got stuck with what we're stuck with. Don't want to
You have a right to call in the contractors and negotiate with them. Either one or both. You can ask for more bidders from these two
Jamie Hill's bid, he asked me if he could have my greater, if I would supplement my greater out for his contract, and another truck, and a 550, to help him have everything. And I said yes, because I'd like to see it stay in the town, because you can work for people in your town, but if you work for somebody out of town, how, they didn't know what snow it was about.
So that's, I would love to support our local community, but we're looking at a delta of $70,000 in a year that we don't know what our revenues are going to be right now, and we, we don't know where we're going to end up. And that's really, really concerning for me as we're starting to look at our budget process. That there's, you know, there's things that may or may not be able to put on warrants because we don't know where we're heading. I think that we, we have a fiscal issue on revenues with everything that's going on. That, that to me is a gigantic concern to give someone a $70,000
You know, $70,000 a year, so you alluded to it, $70,000 a year. Do you want to rely on Goodall again and have what happened with last year? Or whoever?
It blew through at the end.
I think the safety of the citizens is very important. And you're going to recycle them.
But that's okay, if we come to terms on saying, it's a give-take, because of where we are fiscally, we need to be fiscally responsible, we don't have capacity right now, I don't believe we have capacity to add a $20,000 hit to a line item when we are at risk of not getting a lot of revenue in the door. So as a town, we have to then say, okay, we do this, we don't do this.
So if we want to award this locally, can we go and negotiate with them to see if we would reduce his?
Yes, you can negotiate with either one or both contractors.
My sense is, A, we have had, we had two good years of performance, although I know you had concerns from the get-go about the way in which things were being done. We did not have a very good experience in the last year. So I'm not sure that $20,000 a year, if we had had more snow, $20,000 a year would have been way worth it. We were lucky in that we did not have a snowy, icy winter. That was luck, certainly isn't the way that we've had the storms before. I don't think there's anybody in the town of West Bath who's going to say we would prefer not to have safe roads. Jamie Hill, J.R. Hill is reliable, he's local, he drives the same roads that we do. He pays a whale of an excise tax bill, he pays his personal property tax, so some of that money is coming from him that he's putting back into the town. I don't think we will have lost anything by awarding him the bid.
I think we should negotiate with him and see what he can do before we make a decision.
We can certainly talk about it. There's a significant amount of sand that's still in the bid, in the building. That may reduce his numbers as far as
We could sell him that sand that's left, and do agreement, and salt, which would drop it down big time for this first year. Also, I want to do my research and see per mile, and just let me work some of these figures and I'll get back to you guys and let you know whether it's even close or not, if we can, you know. I'm really pushing, we tried these people out of town, and the reason he looked so good the first two years is because of Jamie. Jamie took pride, Jamie had the extra gear and the guys that he needed to pull with him. So that's why he looked so good the first two years. Then after that, and I, I like Goodall, he's a good guy to talk to and stuff, but the problem was, he has way too much on his plate. And he didn't have the crew, he was putting guys in the trucks that never even bowled snow before, and then he turned around about, they can't drive a big truck, so he puts them in the small truck, and we're doing our whole town with one ton and stuff, and that's what's coming into our issue. If we had a real winter, we would have had a
One three-foot snowstorm would have knocked us out.
Yeah.
I don't think this pandemic's going away anytime soon. I think that we have a lot more requests for general assistance that we haven't had in the past year, so I think any negotiations, if you can save us $5,000 a year, is worth looking into.
Is that? I can, I will open the few years with, like I said, I'm going to call, I'm going to call Wards and Gettys and Pittsburgh, whatever, and just get what they're getting. Most of these towns are doing it per mile. They figure out so much a mile, and they're going to make sure the alphabet is applying the sand and salt, and then we'll go for that.
I'm worried about this town, it enables us to sustain what they're paying for right now, and I am worried about trying to not become a burden on people to the point that they can't afford their taxes, and I think we have to look at this long-term, and if we can save a nickel here, a nickel there.
I think we need to request all the folks that are, that they need to re-sharpen their requests for money this year. Every committee that's presented their numbers to us, and we didn't get to our final figures, you know, because of what was going on, we just say, you know what, bare bones right now. We can always add something in if we have it, but we, we have got to be very conscious of the lack of revenue that could be facing us down the road. We have no idea what it's going to be.
And we can talk more about it later, but you don't even need to have a town meeting, and that's something that you can consider as well.
We can flat fund everything.
Yes. Didn't you identify how many miles it were in the RFP?
Yeah.
So you just divide by?
Yeah, I just divide by, it's not a big deal. I mean
Didn't you say 27?
So
But I think there's a fair amount of product still in the sand shed, I think that's worth talking about.
So shall we table this while Steve does his further negotiation?
And I will, I will not leave Goodall out, I'd be more glad to negotiate with him, too, and talk to him. I mean, he's, he has come up to the plate at the end of the year, but, I mean, I'd just like see these figures a little bit lower, because I think right now they're about 60,000 higher than they should be.
Well, and it's a time we don't have the money for it, also.
Right, I mean, this is a hard time to make the big hike for
And it's not just him, I think it's, I think it's across all of our requests for funds, we need to reevaluate.
People are losing job all the time.
People are not going to be out there driving around like they have, people aren't going to be going to work, so they need to be on the roads immediately. I mean, there may be even times that
We still need to be able to make sure they'll open our fire and
Oh, absolutely, but that means, what the people in this town expects them to be.
We can't look at that, we look at our home stuff, right?
They said last year they couldn't get up to some places, so, and a postman couldn't deliver, they couldn't go up.
So in lieu of not having a town meeting, what are the options? Because I know that's, I know we're going to talk about that later.
Right, there was an L.D. that was passed that allows the town to use the current budget through the next budget year.
But I don't necessarily want to make commitments to people at that, what we committed to last year. We're over, I think, overcommitting at that point, and we don't have the revenue, and that's a huge concern.
Can we move to, I'd like to, move to table, item number one, the bid opening for the Winter Road meeting.
I second it.
All okay for table. I'll take care of that. I think that what we should do in terms of town meeting is set a tentative date. If things open up, we can have town meeting. We can recommend flat funding on the basis of whatever. We can't flat fund everything because the school budget includes contracts for pay increases, at least for the teachers' unit.
That's true.
We can't do, we can't flat fund everything.
But you take it out of the weeks they pet off.
They haven't had
They haven't been working harder.
They've been working harder than ever.
Than ever.
And would increases be able to be done as like just a special town meeting without redo, doing the whole budget?
We could, we could do.
We would have to have a special town meeting for the fire truck anyway. So that's one option. You have several options. You can piggyback any increases that are necessary with the school.
But there may be things, we want to pull off warrants if we don't have the money.
Right.
And if we flat fund, that is not an option.
So then the question is, when would you want to shoot for, for town meeting? What date would you want to?
You could put in a tentative date in July, and depending upon how, I mean, it's
Why can't we have it in September?
Have it outside.
That's in July.
You want the field.
More, more for this being flattened and out.
But there's, there's things that happen in October that you, there's a lot, October is a very important month from a tax perspective.
Yeah, that's when we're collecting our taxes.
So it's, you can't, you don't want to get that close to that timeframe.
Right, we'll still have to commit taxes.
So there's, you need to have, you need to know what you're on the hook for before you say
I was just looking at by this
You know, but it's
July might be the sweet spot.
I think at this point, we set a tentative date and then we do I think at this point, we set a tentative date, and then we do what everybody else in the world is doing, which is to see what else is happening as we get closer. That's all we can do.
Is it appropriate at this point to go back out to the, everyone that's come in initially with their request for funds and say, we need you to sharpen your pencils, we'd like you to resubmit that?
We can, we can, we can decide whatever it is we want to fund anything at. We do not have to honor anybody's request. The town meeting decides what the budget is.
But assuming that we don't flat fund.
And it's your warrant, you can decide.
Is that, I mean, I just want to make sure that we have a.
So what do we do about when you say flat funding and somebody's already asked for an increase?
They don't get it.
They don't get it.
But there's, but there's.
They're going to kick us out?
The board of selectmen.
Or we may choose not to, that's my, but that actually comes to an item, that there might be items that we pull off a warrant. That, so my concern is if we commit to flat funding, they're committed to last year's spend. And I'm not necessarily sure that, that we're going to fund everything that was on there based upon what our income is going to be.
We don't entirely have to rely on the income because we still have not spent the surplus. We have a little bit of time so that we don't necessarily have to cut important things.
Nothing important should be cut.
And I don't think we've funded very much that's not important.
I just think there's line items that we, we just need to look at it. We don't know what our funding, I, I don't necessarily want to spend our savings either. I think we need to be cautious on.
I absolutely agree that we don't need to spend any unnecessary money. We also don't need to cut things that are important. I would like to see us go ahead, for instance, and upgrade the office computers because they can't function the way that they need to function.
Yeah, that's become very clear during this time.
We can't do this on Zoom because the office computers don't have Zoom. And that is not helpful. They can't, they don't have the capacity, it's internet. It's not, they have internet. It's that their computers are too old.
You don't have cameras, sweetheart.
Their computers are too old.
We're not equipped, we're ill-equipped.
And that needs to be fixed. The, especially since everything is being done with electronics, you need to have the capacity for the people who work in the office to be in touch with other people. They can't go to meetings, but meetings must be held. So that's, I think that's one thing that we really need to tend, to tend to, and that needs to be done, at least in regard on next year's budget.
So the Budget Advisory Committee has upped its standard?
No, the Budget Advisory Committee is in abeyance like everybody else. I don't know if they have Zoom capacity.
I haven't heard anything about meetings.
Well, because everything's been on theory where there should be no public contact. We, in theory, shouldn't be like this.
And Marie, what do they got?
But, but you're not, you're not, it's, but it's.
We have appropriate social distancing. And that.
And we're, do we want to go on item two?
So let's take business item two. And business item two is the maintenance of the, of the town parking lots. Mark Travis has offered to extend his contract for the same price that we were paying him in, in years previous. And that will save us a good deal of effort for putting things up to bid, trying to get together to beat them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And probably money.
And probably money.
Oh, yeah, definitely. That's, that's a good deal.
I, I think it's a good deal.
I move that we move forward with his contract extension. A second.
All in favor?
I don't think it's flat funding.
How long do we extend again?
It says one year. One year.
I'll go free if you want.
I think we should review it on a yearly basis and see where we are.
Too much to one with a reasonable.
Yeah. If, if we need to, Mark, as soon as we can, I would like to give you a pay increase because you have done good work. So when the town is in a position to be able to know how much money we have, we, we should raise the price. Cost of living hasn't gone down, I've noticed. So. But, but we very, very much, very much appreciate this offer.
And that's just another example of why we need to award our contracts to our town people.
I agree.
I agree.
Our townspeople are the people who care the most and love us best.
Both of these bidders on the roads want an extra seven thousand dollars per year. So that's twenty-one thousand dollars over three years period. This man is, give you a, I'm very good here.
Okay, business item three, town office hours. We have been operating in the town office with only one person in the office at a time. And they miss each other. So if we give permission with staff would, would work together in the office Monday through Friday, nine to two, but the office still would not be open to the public.
What about having a home office? As an option, so that we still keep social distancing to an effect until we know for sure what's going on? Home office, you working from home?
They've been, so they've been doing that, yeah.
Yeah, to an extent. There's a fine amount that you can really do.
Right, it's been very difficult.
I would just ask that you put some protocols in place, like maybe the first thing you do when you come in. Most of you would probably do this anyways, but to check in with anyone, do you have any of the signs of COVID? And if you do, please don't come to work.
Oh, yes, definitely.
But I'm just checking in with one another, making sure that none of you have had any of those signs or symptoms. Are you trying to stay? Are you and Julie able to stay?
Absolutely.
Yes, we're six feet apart.
They're six feet apart, and a lot of what I'm doing at this point is clerical filing that can be done.
In Governor Mills' speech today, she, she did say that she's not making any decisions today, but she did talk about slowly letting state employees go in in small numbers and start co-mingle and, and trying to get worked out in the office. So I, I think we just have to rely and, I'm glad we got such good employees that you don't have to babysit and know what you need to do.
I think we're a small enough crew that we can stay on top of it.
I think the other thing that's important is to, to note is that there are some things that should not ever leave the town office in terms of the records, et cetera, that needs, work needs to be done there.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And from a customer service standpoint, it's been really challenging to.
And just to make sure that you're all comfortable with that, that you're not saying they have to, that they're all agreeable.
No, I've heard the same thing expressed from Julie. She's very eager to have a five-day work week and be able to get her done.
And I, and I also think that we should proceed with the understanding that should any of you at any time begin to feel uncomfortable with the way that things are or concerned about your health or somebody else's, then you have the option not to work, call one another and chug in. And of course, you would be paid for, for time. Because there's no point, there's no point laying off the town clerk.
Do we have a, a plan in place as we start to perhaps slowly open processes? So that, you know, all of a sudden you don't say, hey, everyone come register your car, and you have five hundred people show up. Do you want to follow kind of what they're doing for unemployment?
You're, you're still logged, right?
We're still logged, yes. Yeah, but as she, if she, if we start to see advancement allowing the general public to come to the town hall, do you want to start deciding and maybe mirroring what they're doing with the unemployment process when you're calling in? A through something is on Monday, K through something, or whatever that, so that you're not just hit by all of these people at one time?
I would think it would be smart, obviously, to limit the number of people inside the town office. I can't imagine having more than.
You make a mistake.
Two, like the rest of us.
Yeah, but alphabetically, I don't know that we need to do.
You know, I'm never going to town office again.
What if, what if we asked?
I can do it all online.
What if we asked in the first few weeks, I assume that there's going to be a backlog of people trying to register vehicles?
Not until they have to.
And they're not, they're, no, they're not.
They really want to. It's crazy. When you tell people they don't have to register their vehicles, they still really want to.
Yeah. But what if we space that out and ask people to come by appointment? That way you have, you would, you would have control of the number of people who were in the office at a time.
But what if you just put the distancing thing aside?
Well, you would.
So that you only have one person in the office.
You could still have thirty people. I mean, at the very beginning, I'm concerned that there's going to be this huge flood.
I think there's a lot of us that aren't going to want to go into any place. So maybe a wait-and-see approach, but I would put a sign outside that says, you know, three people maximum, or two feet, please respect the six foot. That's what a lot of places.
Well, even having two people in puts them right next to each other at the corner.
I can, I don't have one minute. One at a time, I, I think, I think by opening, when the opening starts, to control the crowd, have people, ask people to kindly make an appointment. And if you are there early, or if the person in front of you is taking too much time, then we go to the six foot. And if you have people come in in fifteen-minute increments to do car registrations, we mostly.
I just think it's going to be hard to get the message out, appointment only. People are going to drive by, they're going to see people waiting, and they're going to say, oh, good, they're open, there's only two people.
And I'm not going to do, I'm not an appointment-type person. It's what I have time.
Yeah, they can stand outside, it's going to be better weather hopefully.
And if it's not, I'm not going to say that.
And it will take them to set up appointments.
But an appointment is being options.
I think it would be, I see it as some very, there are a lot of pros to having an appointment because you can know who's going to be there and what they're requiring. I just, we've never done it before, so it would take a lot to set up. I think it's something that we can discuss next week when we're all together and.
Come on the plan, because then if you, if you put it on the website and you start, you know, saying, when we open, this is going to be the process. We don't know when that's going to be.
Did Ben open? I don't believe so.
No, I don't think anybody's opened to the public.
Yeah, I think they opened something. I can't remember what it was.
But if we have perhaps an afternoon, I'm thinking of people who have business that they need to accomplish at the town office and who are in the vulnerable populations with an immunity problem, with a pre-existing condition, with a, with a propensity to catch pneumonia, with the slightest cold. Those people need to be kept safe so that if we had advanced publicity that there will be so many afternoons in such and such a stretch of time, that if you can, you can accomplish a business by appointment, then if you want to do the drop-in, then you have, the bulk of the time would be available for the regular kind of stand-in line. But there are some people for whom standing in line is going to be a physical impossibility. And they'll have to keep coming back, and coming back, and coming back.
I think it's reasonable to contact us for an accommodation. I think that would be great. And I'm sure that.
And all the stores have hours for people over sixty.
Because they even, we've had instances where Charlie or Julie have gone out to a vehicle.
Yeah.
To have something signed.
And do people typically know what they need, or do they already say?
Well, I was already thinking, when we do reopen, there will be a strong push of, when, when you're registering the car, make sure you bring your insurance and your mileage.
You know, just maybe, maybe start getting so that as you prepare.
But of course, the older population is the population that not, isn't necessarily checking websites and on social media, so.
You can put also a sandwich board. I mean, I mean, there's things, there's things that we can do.
It'd be great if you put one of those out.
We could do. People don't need to read the sign when it says closed. One simple word on the door, they cannot read that, so expecting people to read a sign requires us asking a lot as well.
It would be worth it at this point to send a one-page flyer to every household in West Bath. When it's, when we are ready to, to start reopening to the process. A snail mail to every household about, this is the plan, this is how you do it. If you're sixty or older or have a, a pre-existing condition that makes you more vulnerable, then you can contact the town office and make an appointment for such and such a time. That kind of, that kind of thing, so that we know that insofar as the post office works, which does amazingly well, people will have had in their hands a piece of paper that says what is going to happen. I think that could be really helpful.
So why don't you guys, when you get back as a group, come up with your plan on what you think? And what are the traditional things that people forget that they need, they're not going back out to their car? So that it's a one-trip event?
And maybe a note on the, on the door that says, if you are registering, do you have?
Don't even put it, I, I think you should put a sandwich board out there that says.
How you share you.
Over the hours.
I know, they're.
People don't read.
They won't read, but you have done everything you can.
It makes any difference. Stop being these takers now. But some people do read these things. You might also remind people, if you're going to send out a flyer, that here's the links on our website for you to register online, blah, 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 blah. These are all these options for people who, you know, like you said, they don't read, then send it. If you're going to send them a piece of paper, then fill a sheet.
The, the, the target population particularly for appointments is much more used to paying attention to a piece of paper than to a thing that exists inside a space. So. And there are still people, an amazing number of people who do not have internet service in their homes.
I didn't until this started.
You got to be dropped on them.
It was that one more time. Unfortunately, I learned how to use Microsoft Groups and Zoom and.
Teams?
Teams, and that's.
Yeah, and.
Once you get it down, it works well.
They are lovely when they work. They don't always.
No, it was down most of the day today for anybody working remote.
Anyway, so the upshot is, yes, you may go to work with each other from nine to two, but it would not be open to the public. Thank you. And thank you for working through and for wanting to work with each other in a fairly small space. That's nice. Okay, we do, let's set a tentative kind of bud, budget for the annual town budget meeting. And then what I think we all should do is take a book, last year's town meeting book, and take a look at the appropriations, see what's going on, maybe ask the. I would be happy to ask the Budget Advisory Committee Chair what he thinks about how to continue with the budget process. Those folks know an awful lot about the budget. And I would not, I would hesitate to make changes to last year's budget without consulting with them. They just know stuff. Lot of experience with budgeting.
County budgets are this year as well.
Yeah, we don't have any choice about the county budget.
I know, that's the trouble is, people don't have choices and they have to pay those.
Right.
They've got to really work it.
And I do, we have, we have had the luxury in, in the last several years of being able to not put anything into the general assistance, but the likelihood of being able to draw that down without replenishing is just zip.
And we didn't put anything in it, did we?
We didn't have to.
Oh, we, yeah, so we might have to.
Because we had decided, we had decided to leave it at fifteen thousand because we has had so few calls. But I know that Julie has already had calls. so few calls, but I know that Julie has already had calls for it, and I'm afraid that there will be more.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you know, we, prior to having all this happen, you know, the West Bath community had doubled their food pantry request in Bath prior to this. So I can only imagine where we are there now. So there's certain allocations that truthfully we need to look at what's going to shift to cover the real immediate need.
So when you talk to the committee, maybe that's just maybe, and I mentioned to them that they may want to look at adding some funding to that.
Yeah, because we, we doubled our year-over-year at the food pantry before this.
Right, right. So, the, um, if we, Christine had suggested that we aim for July, July 15, assuming that we are allowed to have public assemblies.
I think it would be really helpful to Emily in particular, because statute requires her to have certain public hearings, and it would allow her to come up with some dates that she can shoot for.
Right, and, um, we may have to, we're going to have to allow exceptions, because if we can't have meetings of more than 100 people, that's a generous, that's a wildly fantastic idea.
Yeah, I don't hope they'll let us in that space every day.
No? Waiter pools.
We'd have to get, like, maybe a junior high gym or...
Yeah. Yeah.
Or outside. I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't try and do something outside as well.
Hearing.
Yeah.
Hearing?
Hearing for older people is really hard outside with birds and trucks.
Birds and trucks, and wind and the microphones, it could, older people could not hear. Seeing people go to Sunday service and Easter service and sunrise service.
No, they don't. No, they don't.
Well, I've been hearing it here, but I can hear outside.
Not everybody can.
I know, but...
But it's that's the last way for us to get this something there.
I, I think it's certainly worth something to consider, and I'm not saying it's better than anything else, let me just cut it off by the way, that's all.
Kind of you set a date and a rate.
Well, you can have them back up, if you ever win.
I think just getting a nice junior high or something.
We can get it good.
Could you check with our school department and see if, um...
Could you say it?
If the, if the middle school gym might be available? If we need it?
The only place I can think of that's big enough.
What about the Y M C A?
They don't have a room big enough.
They have the whole basketball court.
Not as big as the, uh, if you, if you consider...
I think park bleachers.
Better at the junior high, yeah. If you consider the bleachers and the floor at the, at the middle school, that's, that's the biggest, it's the biggest room we've got for town.
Because you can climb the walls without, and you can't on the, at the lawn.
Is the gym at the Morris High School right over there?
The re-Morris, my daughter calls it. Okay, so do we have a general consensus that we will aim for July 15?
I make a motion that we aim for July 15th for the town meeting, and...
I second it, see how it goes.
And contingent on what happens, as is everything. So, all in favor of setting a tentative date for July 15? And Carly, what are we doing about the primary, just for information purposes?
The primary is actually July 14th, right here at this very building. Absentee ballots aren't available yet, but you can currently request them. All that information is up online, and I've gotten it out to parties so that the Democratic and the Republican Party can distribute applications as well to get the word out there.
Well, and if we're going to be sending a sheet out about coming and registering, there's other things, we can put that up there, we can put planned meeting, you know, potential, I mean, just if we're going to do it, we should put any upcoming...
Is the state, and will that happen still as far as we know?
The state's moving forward with it, yeah.
Because we have such, we have easy access to absentee ballots.
No, I just meant...
And actually, in person.
You just control the people who come in and come out.
Or is it going to be all absentee?
They sent out, they, they sent out a survey to the clerks, asking like how many people we expected. I think they'll only allow a certain number of people in the building, so people will line up outside. So we'll have to have like a line monitor out there maybe?
Yeah.
But I'm getting about 20 absentee requests a day, so hopefully the majority will vote.
Okay. If you need a poll, I'll...
Absolutely.
You want someone to stand outside in the distance, I'm off to that point. Seriously.
Excellent, good.
Okay, um, do we have any other others?
Not this time.
You, you, you're planning for later?
Bring it up later.
Very strange.
Always make sure that they tune into the next meeting.
If possible, given whatever the state of the world is in, we would be having another board of selectmen meeting on May 11th, and that also would be, um, held here at 5:30 in the fire hall, again with appropriate social distancing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, we jump?
Second.
All in favor, stand up and leave. Thank you.